Okay, it's 6:30. I call the April 28 Planning Board meeting to order.
Madam Chair, I move that we take the agenda items, the public hearing for Nathan Ellis Highway LLC out of order and move a two lead talk.
Second that.
Is there any discussion of that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? I want to thank you, first of all, all of you, for coming tonight. I'm going to read a brief statement, and that's so there can be no misunderstanding as to what I am saying. First, this hearing for—
I hear you very well.
I'll try to speak up.
Super tellative.
This hearing for Nathan Ellis Highway LLC will be continued until Tuesday, May 12th, at 6:30 PM in Falmouth Town Hall. Accordingly, I will not be recognizing anyone to speak here tonight. The Planning Board is requiring information from the applicant necessary for us to reach an informed decision. We are requiring specific material to be presented to us regarding, one, the internal circulation network; two, drainage control; three, fire suppression; four, Cavosa Disposal Company's vehicles; five, Cavosa Disposal Company's empty container storage; six, the cardboard aggregation; seven, the composting operations; eight, the site plan; nine, and the provisions found under the zoning bylaw at 240-64.5.d. Excuse me. Any of you who wish to see more detail under each one of these headings, it will be in the file in the planning office, so you can avail yourself of that. I'm sure some of you will have gotten some that you can and will circulate amongst yourselves. The applicant has received a detailed list of the board's requirements. The board is setting a deadline of 2:00 PM Thursday, May 7, 2015, so that the Planning Department, Fire Department, and Engineering Division have the opportunity to begin their technical reviews prior to the board's continued public hearing on May 12th. Therefore, I ask for a motion to continue this hearing to Tuesday, May 12th, 6:30 PM, here in the Town Hall, to review the submitted information and any reports from the Town of Falmouth departments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So I thank you all for coming, and you can see the detail of these requests.
Maybe we should just explain a little.
What?
What does this mean?
Just—
They're on the border.
We just can't—we don't have enough information to really even proceed.
Please. I'm going to call a five-minute recess.
There was an email with this information, uh, Friday by Darlene—
Wait your time.
By, uh—
Pardon me?
Marlene sent a email on Friday.
File will check.
I don't have to either.
I know, we had no input to it.
First on the original agenda is the minutes.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of April 7, 2015.
Okay. Were there any changes in it?
Uh, some minor changes to it, that's all.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay.
On the minutes of April 21st, they just arrived yesterday, and since I was not at that meeting, I'm waiting for comments from the rest of the board.
So you want to table those?
I want to table those till next week.
Okay, so you've moved that. Jim, you want to second it again?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We move on to approval not required plans. The first on the agenda, the applicant is Susan Haines, Louis White, James White, Michael Livingston, to show the boundaries of the lot for purposes of conveyance. John Doyle, PLS, is the—
Good evening. My name is John Doyle, and I'm here to speak for Susan Haines and her partners, her siblings. What we have here is about 11 acres of property that's located on the south side of Carriage Shop Road between Hayway Road and the intersection with Old Barnstable Road. What we're proposing are two lots that are located in the Agricultural A District. Both lots conform to the dimensional requirements that are required in that area: the 100 feet of frontage, the 150 feet of width, and the 45,000 square feet of area. The two lots that we're left with here and we're presenting to you, we would end up with, I believe, 92,500 square feet on the Sue Haines Homestead Lot. Susan Joseph Haines owned the lot, where you see the house, and the remainder of the land would be just under nine acres, 8.91 acres, I believe it is. And we're asking that you endorse that this is not a subdivision.
Any questions from the board?
Comments from the staff?
Okay, then I would be looking for a motion to endorse this approval not required plan.
I'm moving it.
Second that.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Thank you.
Thank you. The second applicant for approval not required is Green Cove LLC to create eight lots to Falmouth Engineering, Inc. And on this one, I'm going to ask that it be tabled. There are some of us who did a site visit, I don't know, a number of years ago, and none of us remember exactly how long ago it was for something out here. It is not a hearing, so I'm going to ask that people on the board go out there and just look at it themselves. As you know, an A&R has to have a sufficient roadway, sufficient frontage for the lots, so I'm asking that you go out and just take a look at what's there. And then, excuse me, I need a motion to table this until our next meeting, which is the 12th.
I have a question.
Yes, Doug?
Is anything marked out there?
No, nothing will be marked out. Nothing will be stated.
How will we know when we get to the start of it?
We can give you some aerial photographs with maybe some landmarks that you can use, other houses.
Okay.
So if you—if you want that, if you need that, swing by and we'll be happy to give that to you.
All right.
So move.
So should we hang on to a copy of this then for our—
Well, we only have three, so we will make you some copies—
Okay.
—of reduced size. You can scan it and print them on smaller paper, so you're not— so you don't have such an unreal day plan.
All right.
So go up to the planning office to get this before individual visits.
Yeah, if you don't—if you don't mind swinging by to do that.
Okay, Jim?
Is the—the question, we're tabling it—
Yes.
—regards to a judgment on the access? Is that where—we're—I'm trying to understand why we're going out there.
We're just tabling it. We can't discuss it tonight. We're simply tabling it so people on the board have a chance to go out there and walk and see, because this is an A&R, and A&Rs have certain specific requirements that they have to meet.
Understood.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we table this—
Until the 12th.
Until the 12th.
Here in Town Hall.
Until second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further comments or questions on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Ready to take this away?
I am indeed. Then we move on to the decision. Applicant Old Main LLC for definitive plan/special permit to create a 10-lot planned residential development at 96 Old Main Road, North Falmouth, Falmouth Engineering. And we have a draft decision if somebody would like to make the motion.
I move that we accept the motion of Old Main LLC, the definitive plan and special permit.
You have to read the motion. You don't get off. You move, and then we discuss.
So, motion, that the Planning Board vote to approve the application of Old Main LLC for a special permit under Article 25, Planned Residential Development of the Zoning Bylaw under Article 4, Definitive Plans, Chapter 305, Subdivision Regulations of the Town of Falmouth for Plan entitled, "Definitive Plan of Land Prepared for Old Main LLC in Falmouth, Mass., Along With a Road Plan and Profile Sheet and Construction Detail Sheet Prepared by Falmouth Engineering, Inc., Dated December 3, 2014, Revised February 9, 2015, on Scale 1 Inch = 40 Feet, with the Following Finding, Waivers, and Conditions." Findings: The applicant has proposed a nine-lot planned residential development along with 304,375 square feet of open space. Furthermore, the applicant has requested a density bonus of one lot under the provisions of Section 241-26.1, which may be granted at the sole discretion of the Planning Board. The property abuts the North Falmouth Elementary School. The board does not find this to be sufficient to grant a density bonus under Section 241-26.1.b (A), which requires the subdivision to abut public open space. The Town of Falmouth owns a considerable amount of land that is not protected open space, including the North Falmouth Elementary School. The board finds these lands are not eligible for consideration as part of a density bonus special permit. Therefore, a revised definitive plan shall be prepared, submitted per Condition Number 3 below. The board finds the creation of a nine-lot planned residential subdevelopment acceptable and shall condition this decision to require the establishment of a homeowners association in conformance with Section 241-30a. The proposed subdivision is within the Wild Harbor River Coastal Pond Overlay District and exceeds five acres. However, the Wild Harbor River overlay is designated as a stabilization area, and the board finds that the standard Title V septic systems are acceptable. The board will grant a waiver of the requirement to submit an environmental impact report under the subdivision rules and regulations in Cold Stone Pond Overlay District of the zoning bylaw. The Planning Board is disciplined to waive—it is disinclined to waive the requirement for streetlights. The road plan and profile sheet and the detail sheet shall be revised to include a streetlight at the intersection and at the end of the cul-de-sac as conditioned below. A sidewalk is shown on the plan running along the south side of the proposed road and is required to be constructed. For the Assistant Town Engineer's Memo dated February 20, 2015, the drainage appears adequate and shall be installed as shown on the above referenced plan. The board finds that town water shall be required. The water main shall be installed under the direction of the Town of Falmouth Utilities Division. The fire hydrant shall also be installed at the end of the cul-de-sac as shown on the above plan. Subject to the above, the Planning Board finds that the application meets the minimum requirements and conditions found in Article 25, Planned Residential Development of the Zoning Bylaw. The integrity of wildlife habitat areas will be enhanced with the development of this property as a planned residential development over a standard grid subdivision. Scenic vistas will be highlighted, whereas the overall design of the residence is taken into consideration the existing product. But the proposed development is consistent with comprehensive plans and objectives. The plan is designed as to produce a desirable character complementing the site's natural features. The plan conforms to the minimum lot dimensions and uses requirements stated in Section 240, 124 through 127 of the zoning bylaw. Land set aside as open space shall be permanently conveyed to the lot owners and shall be used for open space purposes only. In addition, under Article 42, Special Permits, the Planning Board finds the site is adequate in terms of size and suitable for the proposed uses. Due to the size and location of the property and the terrain, there will not be a negative impact on views and vistas. The impact on traffic flow and safety will be minimal. Septic systems will meet current Title V health regulations. Utilities will be provided and maintained. Development will not negatively impact the adequacy of the supply of affordable housing in the town. Waivers, Section 305-30 Street Lights/Street Trees; Section 305-14 Environmental Impact Statement. Conditions: One, prior to the endorsement of the definitive plan, a covenant creating a homeowners association shall be submitted to the Planning Board for approval. Also, a suitable covenant restricting the open space to passively open space purposes only shall be delivered to the board prior to definitive plan endorsement. Said covenants to be recorded with the definitive plan. Two, a suitable road covenant or bond shall be delivered to the board within six months of this decision, or the board may take action to rescind this approval. Three, the definitive plan shall be revised to show nine lots, removing the disallowed bonus lot. Revised plans shall be submitted prior to endorsement. Four, a street opening permit from the Falmouth Engineering Division is required prior to any work being conducted in the public way. The water main shall be installed under the direction of the Utilities Division, and the fire hydrant shall be installed under the direction of the Falmouth Fire and Rescue Department. Five, prior to plan endorsement, the road plan and profile sheet and the detail sheet shall be revised to show the installation of streetlights at the intersection and at the end of the cul-de-sac. Six, the electric service to the night proposed lot shall be placed underground. Seven, no further subdivision along the proposed way shall occur without a modification of this decision by the Falmouth Planning Board. Eight, prior to the final release of road covenant or bond, the applicant shall provide an electronic version of the subdivision plan in a portable document filed PDF format.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Any discussion on this motion?
I have one question after the fact. Is it in our zoning bylaw? Could you remind me, do we have to require underground utilities now in new—
Subdivision rules.
Standard requirement, right?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Very welcome. Thank you.
Make us proud.
Okay, we move on now to discussion of the transportation element goal and policies for the local comprehensive plan. And the three of us did some considerable rewriting of the goal and policies when we were there meeting last week, and so it's not the same old, so please don't yawn and nod. Take a good look at it. We also added some more action items.
Should I read this for the people at home?
Oh, you know, that might be a good idea. At least the goal and policies.
Transportation, community goal and public policies. Falmouth will increase transportation freedom and choice. Policy number one, Falmouth will increase the local and regional transportation system's efficiency, flexibility, and resilience. Policy number two, Falmouth will institutionalize a budget process to provide for the full cost pricing needs of the transportation infrastructure. Policy number three, Falmouth will encourage alternate modes of travel and promising emerging technologies.
Now we have action items under it. Does anybody feel that Bob should read the action items? I didn't think so. They—they're extensive, and they're probably going to be prone to revision at this point.
Well, we're going to discuss them anyway, right?
We can discuss them, yeah. It was a matter of do we want to take the time to read all of those.
We should read them, then discuss them.
Let's just discuss what we—the ones we want to discuss, okay?
Okay.
So are there ones that—anybody wants to discuss on the—on the goal? Do you agree with the goal at this point? Ralph?
Yeah, bullet three, is—is that in any way dovetail with the fact that the Planning Board was looking to become the—or take over the responsibility of transportation—the Transportation Commission that was—that is now defunct?
We—we—one of the action items was reestablish the Transportation Committee, and we kind of realized that transportation is a big item, and we don't really have a whole lot of control over it because it involves the state and all these other entities when you're talking about roads and networks and things like that. So we thought that it would be best if we had an ad hoc committee tasked with a specific job, something that we could tell them, "Okay, we would like to see better connectivity with bikeways. How do we do that?" Have them put together a committee, research it, and then come back with a report, and hopefully some action items that could be moved forward.
And who will appoint this task force?
Responsible parties. Board of Selectmen, DPW, Planning Board.
Where does it say that?
Underneath. You see the unfilled in bullets.
Oh, responsible parties.
Yeah.
Board of Selectmen, DPW, and Planning Board. So, to answer my question, who's going to appoint the task force?
The Board of Selectmen has appointed responsibilities of committees. That's under the charter.
Chair?
Yes, Paul.
Two comments. Let's stay on this one first. Number three, it says task-specific requirements. If the Planning Board comes up with a specific need or requirement, do they—the mechanism and then approach the Board of Selectmen to set up a subcommittee or some entity to do that kind of thing?
Rather than a standing committee, yes. Because what has happened over time, as you know, that committees have been appointed without specific tasks and with no sunset. And they just continue existing, and they have no goals. The idea is to have this be a goal-oriented committee that has specific tasks or tasks to accomplish, and that is sunset.
Well, the specific tasks could range from a very short-term duration to a continued liaison with, for example, a state agency, DOT, or something like that. So this is kind of indefinite about how we do that sort of thing. I know you can't really do it now, but task-specific should be a pretty well-defined activity or series of tasks that they have to do, and not just look at parking in downtown Falmouth, for example.
That was our vision here.
An example would be the Senior Center Site Selection Committee. I mean, we just spent our time with the task that was given to us, which was to research all the different sites in town and report back to the Selectmen. And after that, it was up to them to issue the RFP for the—for the consultant. And we are pretty much disbanded until the next issue that comes up, when we get to meet with the consultant. So we can get called back here and there, but we're not meeting on a regular basis.
Look, I'm just concerned about the task-specific part of it, because it has to be pretty well-defined.
Oh, yeah.
With a significant duration, otherwise it's not worthwhile.
Right, and that's—that's exactly why we—we want it to be specific, because if it's just a committee that kind of sits and, "Oh, let's talk about transportation", we want it to be something very specific and have an outcome.
Hopefully. Okay, the other question is on—actually, I'm two. Responsible parties include town meeting. I'm curious why town meeting would be involved in that activity. Generally, town meeting approves funding—
That's why.
—not the design activities here. Is that what's intended by that activity?
Yeah. Any kinds of bylaw changes or funding would be town meeting responsibility.
So that tells them with the implement portion of that, not the design portion of it. So if there's a funding requirement, then it would go to town meeting, but—
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just add that, it's often a significant cost to do the design, which is why we usually go to town meeting, is to fund design work, and then the construction work gets funded through the Transportation Improvement Program, through the NPO, and paid through state and federal highway money. But it's usually in transportation projects, the town is responsible for funding the design of the project.
Well, in general, the first policy has a town manager involved. Technically, he's involved in all these—all these activities. If the Board of Selectmen's involved, he's involved. So I don't know if you have to repeat his name then here, but he's involved in all the activities that the Board of Selectmen are involved in.
whole lot of control over it because it involves the state and all these other entities when you're talking about roads and networks and things like that. So, we thought that it would be best if we had an ad hoc committee tasked with a specific job, something that we could tell them, okay, we would like to see better connectivity with bikeways. How do we do that? Have them put together a committee, research it, and then come back with a report and hopefully some action items that could be moved forward.
And who will appoint this task force?
Responsible parties. Board of Selectmen, DPW, Planning Board.
Where does it say that?
Underneath. You see the unfilled in bullets.
Oh, responsible parties.
Yeah.
Board of Selectmen, DPW and Planning Board. So, to answer my question, who's going to appoint the task force?
The Board of Selectmen has appointed responsibilities of committees. That's under the charter.
Okay.
Yes, Paul?
Two comments. Let's stay on this one first. Number three, it says task-specific requirements. If the planning board comes up with a specific need or requirement, do they, the mechanism and then approach the Board of Selectmen to set up a subcommittee or some entity to do that kind of thing?
Rather than a standing committee, yes. Because what has happened over time, as you know, that committees have been appointed without specific tasks and with no sunset. And they just continue existing and they have no goals. The idea is to have this be a goal-oriented committee and has specific tasks or tasks to accomplish and that is sunset.
Well, the specific tasks could range from a very short-term duration to a continued liaison with, for example, a state agency, DOT, or something like that. So, this is kind of indefinite about how we do that sort of thing. I know you can't really do it now, but task-specific should be a pretty well-defined activity or series of tasks that they have to do and not just look at parking in downtown Falmouth, for example.
That was our vision here.
An example would be the Senior Center Site Selection Committee. And we just spent our time with the task that was given to us, which was to research all the different sites in town and report back to the Selectmen. And after that, it was up to them to issue the RFP for the consultant. And we are pretty much disbanded until the next issue that comes up, when we get to meet with the consultant. So, we can get called back here and there, but we're not meeting on a regular basis.
Look, I'm just concerned about the task-specific part of it because it has to be pretty well-defined. With a significant duration, otherwise it's not worthwhile.
Right. And that's, that's exactly why we, we want it to be specific because if it's just a committee that kind of sits and, oh, let's talk about transportation, we want it to be something very specific and have an outcome.
Hopefully. Okay, the other question is on, actually, I'm two. Responsible parties include town meeting. I'm curious why town meeting would be involved in that activity. Generally, town meeting approves funding.
That's why.
Not the design activities here. Is that what's intended by that activity?
Yeah. Any kinds of bylaw changes or funding would be town meeting responsibility.
So, that tells them with the implement portion of that, not the design portion of it. So, if there's a funding requirement, then it would go to town meeting, but?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just add that.
Yes, ma'am.
It's often a significant cost to do the design, which is why we usually go to town meeting is to fund design work. And then, the construction work gets funded through the Transportation Improvement Program, through the NPO, and paid through state and federal highway money. But it's usually in transportation projects, the town is responsible for funding the design of the project.
Well, in general, the first policy has a town manager involved. Technically, he's involved in all these, all these activities. If the Board of Selectmen's involved, he's involved. So, I don't know if you have to repeat his name then here, but he's involved in all the activities that the Board of Selectmen are involved in, I would think.
I really don't know how they function, but I think he has independent functions. So, that's why he's been given a specific call-out on bullet point number one. Other comments on this?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with what you said on that because I was going back to number three. And the, the specific, you know, tasks, in the past, that whole committee was defunct in the fact that many, many hours of research and, and solutions to problems were created, but the Selectmen didn't really care about what was creating. Was created, so basically, nothing ever happened. And that's why the committee was totally frustrated. The, the town manager wouldn't necessarily be involved in that level or, or in many of the other levels. He would get involved when it comes to the funding and, and the research and the, the implementation of it. That's when I think that would come in.
So, they have distinct roles, is what you're saying?
Right.
For sure. So, that's what we, the writing of it. Can we circle back though to the goal? Does everybody agree at this point with how it is written? We did change that significantly.
Well, how much control do we have on that? We don't really have transportation intent.
No. The planning board really has very little responsibility. Yes, Marlene?
Well, I want you to think a little bit more creatively about that because you set the street with, under subdivision control law, like you just did. You require, you have an entire book of construction standards. So, you have, you as a board have a lot of regulatory control on how future development looks. So, a lot of the transportation network is obviously already existing, but it is also, just like you approved today, a new road, it's also expanding. So, you are more constrained with our existing network, but you have a great deal of control on the future network.
I see. So, you're thinking in terms of if it were a larger subdivision, there may be a need for, to provide a bus shelter incorporated into it or something like that?
Or cycle lane review. You've, you've required cycle lane reviews to, conditions for bus shelters and, you know, bike infrastructure.
You also have to remember that whereas right now, we don't have, as much as we maybe should take control of, where this is looking ahead, the goal, fifty to a hundred years. And when we say we want to increase transportation freedom and choice, we have no clue what that's going to look like a hundred years from now. We want to be able to make it available, make innovation available for usage. So, that, that's why we, we've changed that goal considerably. The policy number one is pretty much as it was. That we will increase the local and regional transportation systems' efficiency, flexibility and resilience. Yeah, Jim?
And policy number two, this is something that, as long as I've been on the local comprehensive plan and with every group we've ever met, we've talked about how, one of the things we do is we create, we build things, but we don't maintain them. So, the, the idea is to have, you know, when, when we create a capital budget or we institutionalize the full cost pricing so that it'll be maintained throughout its life and not just something that's put in and fifteen or twenty years later, it totally has to be refunded again because it wasn't taken care of.
Marlene?
And this is, policy two is actually the same language that you approved and town meeting approved for your water and wastewater elements. So, we're looking at transportation as part of our, as part of the infrastructure core in, or the infrastructure chapter in the plan. So, especially for these systems where you're conveying something which applies to water, sewer and transportation, you know, it's costly to maintain over the long run. So, that's why we chose to use this language again.
This, this came up, first time I heard about it, when somebody was talking about wooden water mains, that they were still in existence. How could that be, you know? If, in, in fact, you were institutionalizing the full cost pricing and maintaining of it, how could you let a water main remain for, what, eighty, a hundred years? And that's, that's where, that's where it came from.
Where are those located?
Well, I don't know.
I've been Boston. My brother is actually.
I know, they're here.
We have some here.
They're here.
I don't want to, I won't play, get a glass of water on that street.
Policy three, Falmouth will encourage alternate modes of travel and promising emerging technologies. And that goes towards really looking ahead into the future and not constraining what might be a possibility into the future that we're going to support. What? You think nothing's going to happen?
How about a what-if scenario?
Yeah.
The town has a ninety-nine-year lease for a bike path from DOT.
Right.
They could cancel at any point in time. If the town, if DOT decides to put a light rail coming into Falmouth, it'd be tough because the fifty-foot right-of-way in certain seconds is down to fifteen because of steamship authority. And to squeeze that in, I could imagine a fewer in the town of Falmouth if you tried to take away the bike path. I don't think that would really work. But that is something that, you know, potentially could happen down the road. I'm not advocating it, certainly.
So, you've got a lot of rail above the bike path. Yeah, that's what we're going to have. It's going to come right over the bridge, cruise right along the coast.
Why not? These are, these are allowing for possibilities into the future, no matter how far-fetched they may seem today. You don't know what's going to be here fifty to a hundred years from now. So, is everybody okay with the policy and the, excuse me, the goal and the three policies? And do you think we have captured and you don't have to capture where we want to be looking forward into the future? And you don't have to give us a definitive answer now, but the sooner the better as to whether you think that something else should be added in here in a policy?
Well, it would be, I guess, number three covers the desire for expanding bike paths. Doesn't specifically state it, but.
Did you see the back?
That's the first bullet there on the back. Begin to implement improvements recommended in the bike plan prepared by the Cape Cod Commission.
Okay.
They're currently still working on it.
Well, I went to the Bike Race Committee meeting about two weeks ago and the representative from the Cape Cod Commission presented, I believe it was forty-two projects to be considered. And he wanted the members of the Bike Way Committee to rank these things, to see what the interest was. But some of them you could look at and say, why would you be doing that? Like, for example, one was a canopy to cover bikes at the Falmouth Station. I don't know where that came from, but crossing of Locust Street or Palmer Avenue certainly should be high on the list, I would think. So, there were a number of things like that, but there were forty-two of them and it seemed to be a rather extensive wish list. And they were looking for people in Falmouth to try to pare that down. But it was almost an academic exercise. There were so many things in there that I don't know what you would do with that, those kinds of things.
Bike Way Committee would be very active in paring that down to what's possible.
Well, I think they.
And prioritizing.
Yeah. Well, they have to. But that's the kind of approach that we're taking, so it wasn't really dovetailed into anything as far as I could see.
Okay.
But they had a lot of different activities like that. And you look at it, it went on and it was pretty extensive. Some of it was good and necessary. Others were kind of a wish list, in my opinion.
Well, these are the action items that we've come up with so far and I would ask you to think about them and send anything through Marlene that you can think of that should be added or different wording that makes our intent clearer as you understand it or question the intent that is not understandable, which will give us more to work with here.
Well, since we have so much time, do you want to read these and discuss each one? Or do you want to take it home for homework?
Certainly could. Strengthen partnerships with regional and state transportation agencies and private service providers to increase communications, share information and coordinate scheduling and programming. And the intent there is, okay, if a train comes across the bridge and the steamship authority does pick up there to transport, how can all of this be made in?
How can we improve communication with, say, for instance, Cape Cod RTA? Say they have an initiative currently that we're unaware of. How do we become aware of it? And what's the communication mechanism? I know we have a representative, as Marlene pointed out to me a week or two ago, that, I think it's Jane Perry you said now, is it?
It is now.
Right, she's our representative. Will we wait to hear from her if she hears something from CCRTA? That's a pretty big responsibility for her to.
Marlene?
I'm actually going to, the local planning committee who works with me every week on these documents hears this repeatedly, but I'm going to tell you kind of the same thing I tell them. And that, so, your job as the planning board and their job as the local planning committee, subcommittee of this board is to write the plan. We often get into these discussions of actually trying to figure out how to do what we're writing. And you have to kind of separate yourself from, from your, your job is to write the plan, not necessarily at this point to figure out how it's all going to work. So, I mean, I, I encourage you to have this discussion, but just know at this point, you don't have all of the appropriate people in the room that need to be talking about these things. And you don't necessarily maybe have some baseline data that you would need to come, you know, to find a solution. So, I mean, we do it every week. We go through and we kind of drive ourselves crazy thinking, you know, how are we going to do this? And then we, and then we realize, well, we're not supposed to actually be doing it. We're supposed to be identifying the tasks to meet our goals.
Right. And that's good that we have these goals and tasks, but if we're going to be the ones making a plan, it would be, I think, a good idea to incorporate how the plan could work. I know that's maybe not our job, but it seems like it should be. If we're going to make a plan, we should implement a, a plan to, to make it happen. Because that's where the disconnection is.
And along those lines, I encourage you to really think about who the responsible parties are and, and identify maybe some, that, identify who we might be missing and who, and who can, you know, who can fill in those puzzle pieces in order to, in order to actually make this happen.
Right.
Because it's not, it's not necessarily us, depending on the element. Some elements like land use are heavily, like, you can do almost all of those things.
If we were to, say, for instance, have a designated planning board member to be a liaison, maybe then that would be an implementation. I don't know if that's something that's doable, but there seems to be, there seems to be a need to have some kind of connection and follow-through of these.
Just comment on that. This particular one, this is where the town manager earns his money. He's the person in this, not us. He's the one to make the connections because this task would be telling him, this is something the town needs. So, he'd be one of the main contacts, which would then start the ball rolling. I mean, I'm just using that example. He would be the person to find out who needs to be contact. He's the one in charge that has the ability to get committees and know which committees people are on. There's a lot more people out there that know far more than we do. And, and this is, we have to build the plan and always, this can always change, these action items can always change if they don't fit, but we're just trying to build this plan and make sure we've got the things to get everybody rolling.
I agree with your position, but I feel like that maybe, you know, they're very busy down there.
That's not our job, though. We have to build this plan that is so that everybody in the town can use it. Anybody that steps into that job or anybody that's elected as a Selectman or whatever can pick this up, read it and go, these are the things that are happening. Why aren't these happening? And they're the ones that are supposed to come forward and basically put the foot to the fire there and make sure things are happening. We've just got to build this thing. I mean, this started when I was on the board, six years ago, and it's, they've done a tremendous amount of work to get this far with this plan. I just want to say, that's what this is all about, is building the plan for everybody in the town to be able to understand.
I agree with you.
Well, what we found too is, as we go through these and we have the state boldness involved, you talk to the DPW or the town engineer, they've already got these things. They, they know who to communicate with and they'll, they've told us some of the inner workings of what goes on. So, that's kind of already taken care of. We, we shouldn't have to worry about increasing communication because that's the responsibility of the DPW, which in a lot of cases, they're already doing.
Sounds like Doug wants to volunteer.
Yeah.
Go ahead. I will definitely check up on it.
Well, you know, when we can, when we say consider creation of a task-specific transportation working group, it may be that that working group decides that we need an individual who is tasked with that for the town. Because there are new things coming all the time. I don't know what that's going to play out, but as Ken said, we're delineating what has to take place here.
Okay.
Any other comments on that one?
I, I have a question, just, just following up on Doug's point. Is there any reporting schedule for this, the person that's our interface with the RTA? Or is it just whenever they want to? How, is that a, do they come to the planning board? Do they come to the Selectmen? Do they come to the town manager? What is that process?
She's appointed, he or she is appointed by the Board of Selectmen. I don't know how long the term is for, but I know that there is a term and she's, she or he is regularly reappointed. It's not a planning board, but if, if there was an issue you were working on and wanted, and Jane was at, I think she was at one or two of our.
She was, I think.
Our first couple meetings. But if there's an issue where the planning board needs information or wants her to come and talk to you, then that can certainly easily happen.
Any other comments on that first bullet point? Okay. Second bullet point. Design and implement the improvements recommended in the Main Street slash Route 28, a transportation master plan prepared by, excuse me, by McMahon Associates. Expected completion November 2015. That's pretty straightforward.
That's pretty specific.
Okay.
One of the things, I think, we, on this, the question has been asked, are we going to get some of the local groups that are involved in Main Street, involved in some of this, this implementation or, or even reviewing these comments? It was brought up, the Village Association, they hadn't heard anything. How are we going to bring them in or is it, are they just going to be part of the public?
I think they would probably be part of the public.
Not have a specific role?
I don't think so at this point. Not until we know what the report is. It would be hard to say one way or the other what's necessary.
And we're actually, a lot, excuse me, a lot of the Village Association focuses more on Main Street downtown.
Right.
And we're more now planning the east side of Main Street. Is that still the same with your?
Yes. It's touching a little bit on, on Main Street, on the east. Right, they, they don't go all the way to east. There's a gap. There's a gap there, you're right. But I don't know, we don't know what the report says. It may say something on Main Street too. Marlene?
I think, I think similar to what we're talking about, like, our struggles of kind of jumping straight into implementing the action items, what McMahon is going to give you is a master plan, just like we're writing here. So they're not necessar, so you're, it's going to, each of those ideas will have to be prioritized and then further developed. If the task that is slated for development is wayfinding in downtown, well, then the Village Association is a, is a key stakeholder. If a task, if the task that's slated for communication is redesigning the intersection at Davis Street, Springbars Road, and Dilly Cam Avenue, the Village Association wouldn't be a stakeholder. So, again, until we...
We've got to wait till we find out what they recommend.
Until we actually get into what projects are, are going to move, then we don't know who the stakeholders are.
Okay.
What they indicated during the presentation to the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board is that they had a fourth stage process. And the first stage was just collecting basic data, which they are now. So they hadn't had an opportunity to talk to the Village Association. But the intent is to develop some activities, have public hearings as appropriate. So I think they're heading in that direction. So I wouldn't be too worried about who they didn't contact yet because it's just the beginning part of the study.
Okay. We've discussed number three. Let's move on to four. Review subdivision design and construction standards for infrastructure investments and streetscape design considerations to further transportation goals.
That's back to like allowing for wider shoulder for bikes or maybe a bus shelter or something like that.
And to you, that's obvious.
And this is firmly your task.
My concern is that these action items are also obvious as we're stating them, that we're not leaving something questionable as to our meeting. You got it right away.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody else comment on that one? Okay. Number five. Strategically invest Chapter 90 funds to strengthen network connectivity. And this came really out of our discussion with Mr. McConaty, Peter McConaty, as he described how there's a certain amount of Chapter 90 funds, and he looks at it every year and says, okay, what is his emphasis going to be that year? This year it's sidewalks. And so he uses the available funds aside from roads, but that's, the sidewalks are part of his plan. It was a very interesting meeting with him, the information we got. So, he's actually currently doing this, strengthening the network connectivity. He's looking at the whole roadway network with that in mind.
And what he was talking about with sidewalks is looking at where there are sidewalks existing and where some might need to be connected, like Brick Hill Road up around to, to the high school. You go around the corner in front of Jack and the Beanstalk, and you want to go around that corner and continue that sidewalk. And then hopefully, maybe eventually, all the way down.
So it sounded to us like he's got this pretty well in hand.
Yeah. But I do think it's fair to say that he would welcome any, you know, collaboration with, with you as the planning board going forward.
Yeah, I didn't mean to cut that off. He was, he really enjoyed the meeting too. We went on a long time. We were both feeding off of each other with ideas.
We went till six o'clock at night with him. It was amazing.
You're shorting it, it was almost 6:30.
Yeah. 6:20.
Yeah. Okay.
He's getting ready to pull the fire alarm to get out.
Okay. On the next page, begin to implement improvements recommended in the bike plan prepared by the Cape Cod Commission. We've discussed that too.
Right.
That we haven't really seen it in its completion yet. The next one. Comprehensive evaluate Thelma's existing public transportation infrastructure, including age, quality, and maintenance needs. Identify future needs and gaps in service to develop a long-term plan for maintenance and strategic expansion. Pay particular attention to intermodal connections, accessibility, and safety improvements. This is pretty comprehensive.
That's in depth.
But it also, what it's really doing is verbally building this web that we're looking at for transportation, of all different kinds of transportation. And it's encouraging the building of that web in transportation. It's also saying, look, guys, you've got to look back and see what's there and what's its condition to. Number eight. Develop a robust capital improvement planning process and corresponding capital budget to assess the entire infrastructure, facilities, and equipment needs of the town, and appropriately schedule maintenance and expansion projects. This directly feeds off of policy number two. The other thing too that I, has become obvious is that a lot of the capital needs during this horrendous recession have been let slide because the money was needed elsewhere. So, I'm not sure how this is actually going to fit in. Because as you well know, if you don't have the money, you've got to put it where it's absolutely necessary. But along with that, then there should be a plan. If we're shorting Peter to pay Paul, Peter's going to have to be in that plan for reimbursement at some point. Nine. Recommend zoning changes to allow alternative refueling stations. As you know, electric cars are coming back rather rapidly, and they're going to need to have plug-in stations. Tesla is creating their own around the country, but we have other manufacturers who need to be plugged in. And that's one thing. There may be other alternative technologies, so we're going to be needing some sort of refueling, who knows what at this point in time. Ten. Explore partnerships with local institutions and service providers to share resources, such as parking lots and shuttles. Some of these we may squish together a little bit too. Because that one is similar to number one. We're looking to strengthen partnerships. So those two may be capable of being put together.
I, I discussed this at one of our meetings. I ride the whoosh quite a bit in the summertime. And I'll never forget, one time I was standing, waiting for the whoosh bus to come, and I saw, I think I counted ten empty Steamship Authority buses go by the same route. Because they don't pick up, we may not be able to get them that, but I just commented on, boy, we're burning a lot of fuel here with empty buses as a, the state is, not us as a town.
Right. It might be empty going down, have a few coming back.
No, but they just, there's, anyways, it just needs to be studied and understood, see if there's a way to, is it all possible? Maybe it is. Should be looked at.
At that time of day.
And the last one we have on here is compile a baseline data inventory for transportation infrastructure, including right-of-way, pavement width and conditions, sidewalks, curbing, streetlights, et cetera. The reason we brought this in is we have no clue what we could do looking into the future. How wide are those roads? Will they allow for sidewalks? Will they allow for bicycle lanes? Because a lot of the streets you see, well, it looks like property owners own right down to the street, and they don't. They've created their lawns right down to the street. So this inventory will tell us what's real.
I think we might want to have a, another item, or maybe it could be incorporated into one of these somewhere. We need an evaluation of our coastal roads to go along with our coastal resiliency. Start looking at what those elevations are in planning, whether or not it's practical to consider raising some of them and, and trying to reinforce the shoreline, which many people say is a waste of time. But we should at least evaluate it to know what we're talking about, if we want to consider whether or not it's an option. And then, do we want to consider elevated roadways? So there's a lot of transportation issues that tie in with the coastal resiliency that we need to start thinking about pretty soon.
We were internally discussing it, but it didn't make it into an action item. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Ralph?
It looks to me like there's a lot of overlap and duplication in 11 and 7. So just take a, take another look at that, maybe...
We'll take a look at it.
Combine those or...
Or split them differently perhaps.
Yeah. It looks like they're saying the same thing twice, to me.
I don't think they are, but maybe they need to be restated to make the differentiation clearer. Are we all good with this now?
Number 11, Ralph, is looking at roads like Sandwich Road and looking at what the actual road layout width is as opposed to what it seems to be. So we'd like to get that data for every road in town as, as opposed to the other components to the infrastructure. We want to know what the planning board has as far as road layout and what we could possibly do.
Paul?
We've been looking at different elements of the local comprehensive plan. Where are we in starting to put these things together to see how they line up with some of the other activities in this local comprehensive plan? What's the schedule for doing that?
I'm not sure, understand. If you go to the planning board website...
Well, we've been looking at transportation, we've been looking at coastal resiliency, we've been looking at some other things. And eventually, it's going to be part of a local comprehensive plan. Is there an outline of what that plan consists of? And how does this fit in with the other elements?
We have our current comprehensive plan, and it has certain elements, some of which we have changed, combined. We've added a new one, resiliency. The ones that have been passed by town meeting are currently on the planning board website. And they supplant the ones that are in the 2005 plan. They've been voted by town meeting, so they are the ones that are operational currently. And the overall plan is still being built. We go through the elements and decide, does this reach the status of an element? Should we combine some of the elements? So we're working through that. We don't precisely know what the final elements would be at this point. As I said, we've combined water, wastewater, we've added resiliency, we've changed affordable housing, housing to housing, because we're trying to make it broader.
Yeah, I understand that, but how, eventually, this is all going to fit together.
In one document.
In one document. What's the schedule for...
The completion of it?
Yeah.
When it's done.
Well, because there's no real target date.
No.
It's just a process that's going on, these different elements.
Correct. It's a process.
Will there be new elements added to it?
As soon as we vote them at town meeting, they're incorporated in the plan immediately.
So every town meeting that's voted, it is an improvement...
Well, I understand that, but at some point in time, you're going to put all this together.
It already is the...
They are together, that's the point. We're not understanding each other.
It's on the planning board website.
See, it's already been put in.
It's in the plan.
All the ones that are done are, have been put into the, to the old plan, basically.
We have a combination of new and old right now, and we're slowly exchanging out the old for the new. And I guess your question is, when is that going to be done?
Yes, that's right.
That's a legitimate question.
Eventually, there will be a new document with, that kind of captures much of our discussion on the interactions and the relationships between the element, which doesn't exist in the old plan. The element stands in isolation in the old plan, which is a real, well, I mean, it's a real shortcoming, but it's also, doesn't really reflect how life works. So we are going to attempt at least to discuss how all of these pieces work together.
It's always much easier to edit than to create, and what we're doing is creating.
And unless you're going to vote a deadline, I'm not suggesting one.
No.
No.
These have varied in how long it takes us to put them together, and we reach out to entities that have something to do with it. We'll be meeting with Scott Lindell at the Bike Waste Committee tomorrow to add in to transportation. We already met with Peter McConaty. And we haven't discussed who else we might want to meet with, with transportation, to get their input on it. So however, however long those interactions take, and however long it takes for us in a meeting with the selectmen, and then taking it to town meeting, we can't guarantee a completion date.
How about Tom Caher?
Yes, we had talked about that. Jim was going to contact him to see what his availability will, because of course, that's the whole connectivity issue. So he should have quite a lot to say on that, I think.
Give a lot of good ideas as to how we can connect with him.
So, and you know, it may be that every so often, we reach out to him to see what is new going on too, because of this communication.
I guess I should say Tom Caher, who's the, what's the title for the, he runs the RTA?
Yes.
Executive Director of the Cape Cod RTA, yeah.
Correct.
Yes, Ken.
I just want to ask, the, the goals here, short term, you know, complete within the next year, that's based on getting voted in, correct?
Yes.
So it would be November that the timetables and schedules would start if this was voted in in November? I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, the, the action items are actually generally, well, they're either part of a budget, or they're part of a warrant article, you know?
Right.
So they both get, either budgeted, approved by the budget, or approved by the warrant article. We're just putting them in the plan right now, and so that year is from the date that they get approved as, as a warrant article, or is it a budget item?
Gotcha.
It could be three years away from now.
Yeah. And we've kind of prioritized them as far as how immediate they are as well.
No, I was just wanting to make sure myself, clarify, that's not from the day us voting on it, that's from once it's approved.
Yeah. We can't do them either.
Actually, it doesn't, it's, it's just a ranking. It doesn't, nobody actually can enforce that.
No, I was just wondering if somebody looked at this and go, oh, six months, and you know, well, that's November.
No.
Somebody else may question that. Right. That's what I wanted to ask.
It's sort of a floating, as Marlene said, it's a floating ranking. Yeah, I think more it's an idea as to how much we envision, how much time we envision it would take to complete those action items too. Okay, shall we move on? The next one is the agenda for the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board Workshop on Housing. And I believe that we voted last week to request of the selectmen that it be sometime mid to end of June, the joint meeting. And one of the things we need to do is to have a good discussion with them as to how to implement the housing element and the housing report that we got, the things that need implementing. We had discussed putting a new, well, it's not new because it's in there, the accessory apartment by law, but changing that, that seems to be the quickest bang for the buck as to how we're going. And so I think we need to discuss the accessory apartment by law, and how they envision it, and what changes, and whether they would support such a thing or not.
Would we not discuss it ourselves first and propose how it might be changed and then present that to them?
I think we could, should have some ideas, but this is going to be a Saturday workshop. And so, yes, we need to have somebody to emcee it, if you will, to give some ideas. Marlene? Marlene?
I think, if I understand your, I understand your question, Doug. And the planning board, it would be a zoning article. So the planning board would have to draft it.
Right.
At all public hearings. And you make the recommendation. So the Board of Selectmen actually has no formal, no formal input into a zoning article. They don't, they make your recommendations on the local comprehensive plan, because they're actually charged with having that adopted.
Right.
But, so, I think it's wise for you to kind of just get their thoughts on what they would find acceptable, to help you in drafting your bylaw and framing it. Rather than waiting until the end, and finding out on town meeting floor that they're going to speak against it.
Right. Well, we should show up with ideas that are ready to go for them, rather than have, trying to get them, they might not have ideas ready as to what might be appropriate changes.
You can have some, I think you should definitely have some very broad suggestions. But I wouldn't, but I would have it kind of be at the very high level, not of drafted bylaw.
Okay.
It's the level of, okay, this is what's permissible by accessory apartments now.
Right.
We envision accessory apartments maybe to be more dense in certain areas. But what is your thought on that?
And less restrictive.
Mm-hmm.
So it can actually be used.
Yeah.
We have to actually tell them, because they probably are not familiar with what the accessory apartment by law is now, and we'd like to work with it.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I think we should, whether it's collectively, have a discussion at our meeting, or at least individually, be ready with what those ideas might be.
I agree with you. We can't just go in sucking up thumbs on this, you know.
What do you guys want to do? What do you want to do?
Yeah, right. That's what happens, if you don't come in with some information there.
How would we do it? Would we put it on our agenda, just have a discussion on it?
I think we should, yeah.
And actually, I'd like to do, I would love to have the accessory unit on our discussion.
At least come to a consensus of what we feel would be appropriate.
Right.
Have a discussion.
What does it do now? What would, we'd like to see it accomplish.
And think through the problems a little bit, before we ask them what they think.
We could use that as a model, and then think if we want to do, do other things. Because that one, we've talked about a lot, so we could try that one. And if other things come up, we could do that, too. But we don't have much time. When's the next time, when are we meeting with them?
End of June.
End of June.
So we need to do that like the first or second week of June, at the latest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's the date for the workshop?
We don't know yet.
Mid to late June.
Yes. The last two Saturdays, most likely. One of the last two Saturdays.
Now, there are other alternatives to housing, too. And there is a workshop going on, 29th, is it? Or if I got that confused with something else. Anyway, there is one going on. And there are other alternatives to housing. There's this whole movement for tiny houses.
Yeah, small apartments.
Mm-hmm. Small apartments, tiny houses. How would they fit into the landscape here in Valmath? Could they? What kind of zoning? Is that something that the selectmen would like to contemplate? When you're talking about tiny houses, you're talking about maybe seven, eight hundred square foot houses.
Smaller than that.
Well, some are way much smaller.
We have a lot of seven or eight hundred square foot houses in town right now. We have a lot.
I'm.
No, 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 no. Four hundred is TV.
Okay.
We could show you a lot of eight hundred square foot ones.
So however tiny houses are defined, and tiny apartments are defined, some of them are, the apartments are barely bigger than a walk-in closet.
Yeah. Personally, I don't think that's, I mean, that's, we should look into it, but we have a lot of those already. What I think we should really consider is areas where we can have multifamily housing, and even larger buildings, that affordable housing zoning, the, excuse me, the multifamily housing zoning, that's another thing that's important that we should be discussing.
We were thinking, now, not suggesting this, but the idea is, you could also have tiny houses on a site as multiple, you know, ending up with 20 units on it.
You could, but it's still never going to be as cost-effective as.
Just to discuss.
One building.
Right. I mean, it's just a discussion we need to have.
Right.
Because it's a change to our town, but everyone knows that that's where the economy of scale is, and real affordability comes from.
And we need to get other people in, just us, talking about what's possible.
So there, there's two things we could talk about. We could have the multifamily, we don't have a multifamily zone.
No, but we talked about the need to consider it.
Right, well, maybe that's another one we could bring up with the selectmen, just to open the conversation, not to actually decide it, but just to start the conversation.
And that one, we won't be as specifically prepared, as much as just prepare for the conversation.
But there's two big items we could take the lead on, based on your suggestion of digging in on something. And I think they're both important.
And is it to be supposed that they may come up with other, on their own, or are they looking to us to give total guidance on this for housing? Do you know?
I don't know, but I assume that they'll also want to add agenda items.
Okay.
Ralph?
Yes, Ralph?
Yeah, I think we, it'd be a good idea to include the Affordable Housing Committee, get a report from them. They've been, finally been appointed, had enough members to meet, and now they're looking to move forward. We have a representative from the Affordable Housing Committee here tonight. And I think that since they're supposed to report to the selectmen, I think it would be appropriate if the Affordable Housing Committee talked about what they're going to do in the future.
That's one element of what we're looking at for housing. It's not just affordable. That's, so we don't want to just say, okay, this is an affordable housing joint meeting, because it's not.
I didn't say that.
It's a housing.
No, but we, on our discussion.
No, I just wanted to make that clear, Ralph, that this is more than just affordable.
Maybe, maybe when we're talking about, when we're getting our homework or our stuff ready for the selectmen, maybe at that time, have the Affordable Housing come in and talk to us? Is that what you're saying, Ralph?
That would be a good idea.
During the workshop. During the workshop.
It's a planning board selectment workshop.
We haven't done that.
I didn't, I didn't say that they're going to be a part of it. I said they would report to us, be on the agenda, but they wouldn't be part of it.
But it might be a very good thing if we could meet, maybe during our meeting, that we talk about this. Maybe the Affordable, we could invite the Affordable Housing Committee to come and give us some things that they may want brought up.
We can get it done that way, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I'm thinking that might be.
Just have them come, so we would meet them, too.
Well, then you pass it on to the selectmen, as an interpretation of what they said. You're not letting them speak for themselves.
Well.
And they're appointed by the selectmen.
Maybe, maybe they could do both.
They could still meet with the selectmen separately, too. We're not filtering them, we're just talking about the stuff we're bringing to it, right?
When we've had these joint meetings, we generally do not bring other groups in for presentations or part of the discussion. I, I don't even know what to say about that. I'm more than happy to have the Affordable Housing Group talk with us when we're talking about what we need to bring up with the housing.
Well, I would like to hear them talk to us both about the accessory apartment and multiple, and multifamily zoning, and getting their ideas on that. Those are the two.
Well, there may be other things.
I know, but those are the two things I'd like to hear their comments on, which we're already going to have on our agenda, so maybe we invite them to our meeting.
Okay. Where we're discussing.
Where we're preparing.
Okay.
I personally agree with Ralph's idea. I don't, I don't know why it would be not appropriate for them to be there with us, with the selectmen.
I'm just saying, traditionally, we haven't, but.
No, I'm just saying, I just think it's not a bad idea, and I don't see the harm in it. Is there some sort of protocol that's typical for planning board, selectmen joint meeting, where that would not be a normal procedure?
We just haven't, and there's, it's just habit, I suspect, more than anything.
I think when you start doing that, you're getting into special interests. So if we invite the Affordable Housing Committee, we should also invite developers. And I think that it's, it's between the planning board and the selectmen. If there are agenda items about affordable housing that we can discuss, then that should be part of our agenda. But I really don't think that we should open it up to a forum. I mean, it's, a workshop is different. A housing workshop is different, where you're inviting all different groups in. But for a joint meeting workshop of the selectmen and the planning board should be kept to these two boards, and the members thereof.
Thank you, Bob. We had discussed that, and that blew my mind right now, as to the why of it. So I thank you for remembering that, bringing it up. That doesn't prevent us, as a board, from talking with these groups, but, yeah, because we had talked about how many groups we'd have to bring in. If we brought in one, we'd have to bring in a dozen. And then that, we wouldn't get as much accomplished as we have.
Okay. So we'll invite them to our discussion, preliminary discussion. And then, if they want to come to the joint meeting, they can come, and they can be observers, and maybe.
It's a public meeting.
A comment here or there, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it'll be on the agenda, that we're going to discuss housing prior to the housing workshop with the selectmen. And anybody that's interested in housing can come to that meeting and listen to the discussion.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay.
Any more comments as to what you'd like to see brought up with that joint meeting? Or we've pretty much covered the waterfront here?
Do we have a draft agenda?
No, not yet.
Yet, we don't.
We're going to have a, can we briefly touch on the subject we talked about last week, which is the possibility that with these new rising tides in the coastline, the fact of what we talked about, some people are going to want to ask us to consider newer heights in the coastal zones. It's early for that discussion, but it's.
No, it's not early.
It's housing.
Yes, it's housing.
And it's the landscape of our town.
And I know Doug Jones, too, is extremely interested in resiliency planning. Definitely. That's part of the housing planning.
Elevation, you want as a.
The elevation discussion, yeah.
Is it premature? We really haven't discussed it amongst ourselves, or done any research or data from other areas? I mean, I thought we were going to have a lot of discussion in our own meetings first.
We are, and we're going to discuss with Mr. Gore, and he's going to explain to us the implications.
Right.
But it doesn't mean we can't just generally discuss whether or not we want to consider 45-foot-tall buildings on our beach.
Yeah, we need to know what their opinion is, because anything we send forward is going to have to get their endorsement, or if they speak out against it, it could be.
I was just questioning whether it's this year's or next year's, that's all. That's the only thing I was bringing up.
I mean, we can just talk about it, and even if we say, well, we don't have all the information, but it's coming up.
Bring it back again next year, yeah.
So we want you to be aware, and.
Break this subject, yeah.
This is what might happen, and let's get a little initial feedback going here. Okay. Holly?
Ralph, and I actually blew here today about this Cape Cod.
That's what I was referring to, correct?
Just wanted to share.
It's, well, it's in the Cape Cod Times in the business section today.
We should maybe read, if you could read it.
She has to go to the podium.
Go to the podium, and read when it is, so that way the public would know. Because I remember reading it somewhere.
Right. Holly Wilson, Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee. This is Smarter Cape Summit 5.
That's where I started.
I don't know how much of this I should read, but it's happening on May 6th, from 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM. There's a limit of 250 people to attend it. It's in Hyannis, at the conference center there. And there's this short, probably four-paragraph piece in the Cape Cod Times today, in the business section. Do you want me to read it?
Why don't you just give, because there was a website, that could be for enrollment, and I assume additional information on it. So if you give the website, Holly?
You can register at ecapechamber.com. That's what they're giving. But if you, I know that if you Google Smarter Cape Summit 5, it gives a good description of it. And I think it would be really great if people in this town that are planning on getting together to talk about housing, were to attend this if they can. Because it is a regional problem, worldwide problem, countrywide problem, but regionally, it's the same problem. Cape being the resort community that it is, and the retirement community that it is, it's a lot of what's driven things in the direction that is making it harder for working people to be here and afford to live here. And that's pretty much what this is about.
Thank you. I'm glad you had that.
Okay.
Obviously, I had the wrong date. I had it mixed with something else, too.
Something pretty interesting's going on.
So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's there. I think there's a $25 registration fee, too, I believe.
That's right.
On that. So, have we beaten this to death, as to what potential agenda items will be?
We will schedule plenty of time on one of your agendas prior to that, so of course, if anything else, you know, anything else comes up, we can always add it.
Okay. Okay, there is no general correspondence. It was a nice blank folder tonight, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
All right.